Okay, it's Friday, 13th. Bandit planning board, opening the meeting. First thing on the agenda is to reorganize. Do you want to hold off a few more minutes and see if the other members shows?
Yes.
We will do it tonight, but...
I don't have a number or anything.
Well, she was in the mail. Minutes? We do have a slide machine. I'd ask everybody to sign in if they would please. You've got a decision for the Veterans Memorial Park meeting for signature. I'm going to sign and pass it out. Sorry, we've got a code switch that's red.
So that decision also only has the three numbers that would pass in?
Jenny Frans. The other day Jenny told me some, requested some information about what she was trying to do up there.
Battle.
She's in the process of purchasing a piece of property contingent on being allowed to do certain things within that block. So, as always, when I get these phone calls, I give my opinion about the board's opinion. So I asked her to come in for an informational session to explain to the board what she's proposing to do. And then the board can give her some guidance on what potential stuff should she do. It's a little involved because again, sale of property is contingent on being allowed to do it. So she's trying to write anything up. And I believe it's going to require, and I may be wrong, it may require zoning board appeals co-meeting. Melissa?
Hi, Melissa. Nice to meet you.
Melissa looks familiar.
Hi, how are you? Karen?
Yeah.
Hi.
What's your last name?
Saint Germain.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, so would you like to present to the board what your...
Yeah. So I'm Jenny Frans, as you said. You were my realtor, so we can Karen. This is Carlos, we're working with his company on the site planning and engineering and architecture group. So he was nice enough to break some boards today, we could show you as well. I'm the founder of Better Together Dog Rescue. We founded last February and we primarily transport dogs from southern states. We're a private non-profit, not a profit. Also registered in Massachusetts as well as registered and licensed in the state of Connecticut. So what we're looking to do is to build a facility here in Granby on Bachelor Street. It would be a kind of facility, but also a community-based facility as well. So community engagement, volunteering, everything compatible with that building. The dogs, you know, obviously would be on-site. We would have indoor/outdoor panels, but the outdoor panels would be closed during the evening hours as far as noise goes. So yeah, and half of our mission is adoption and then the other half is community support. So we'll have a mobile food pantry and free store. We'll be working with places such as the Amherst Survival Center as well as preschool, eater clinics, vaccine clinics and things like that. So that we can support our community and make sure that their dogs can stay in homes with them other than being turned to the shelter for some reason. And that's just kind of the gist of the mission.
So it's strictly a nonprofit shelter or are we taking in?
It's strictly nonprofit. And we do work within the state as well. So we do take in surrenders within the state and we also work with other rescues within the state to help with their overpopulation transfers. Most of the dogs are coming in from out of state. So within the state of Massachusetts, we need a building, we need an isolation building in order to comply with the regulations of the state. When dogs come in from out of state, they need to be quarantined for 48 hours. So in order for us to really build within our community here, we need to have a building where we can bring those dogs in for those 48 hours. For our vet come in and sign out on them before they go off to the Bachelor Street.
Any questions? Whereabouts on Bachelor Street?
It is located directly next to the power lines.
So if you were going up through the Amherst Street or Amherst Road? Amherst Street, hit that left up Bachelor Street, right where the power lines are on the right-hand side, and it's to the left.
And I know this is a little, it's so lit, but this is Bachelor Street, power lines. That's conservation line, so that's probably going to be done within the same area. There's a lot of fossil, and then this is one on the Aldridge, Aldridge Pond.
So the property was purchased and we also had our Carlos head of butt gatherings representative go out and also do his own observation and that they came up on page four.
We've been, basically we had a wetlands scientist, Ward Smith, and he came out and did flagging, which was already flagged before. But he came back, did flagging again, and banks pretty much were all there and then we, you know, were shown the...
What's the size?
2.2.
2.6 acres.
Yeah, just about 2.6.
Amherst.
Amherst Street is, I would be concerned, so this is storage area.
Will be occupied by employees that are volunteers during the day. There will be no whatever, we'll do the evening walks and then clean up and then the home will come back later.
And all the land to the north here, it's all, that's all conservation.
Yeah, that's Bachelor Grove and Conservation.
And yes, the one nears lots.
Yeah, there's three lots right there. One's kind of being done eventually, the other one I tend to stop, I'm not too sure what's going on with it. But nothing really, didn't like, I'm confused.
I don't want too much, actually. Alright.
Any here?
Yes.
Is there another dog rescue somewhere else? No, starting to spend it on a property. Yes, yes.
No, that's the next one. So this is, north, north is called? And the part we're talking about, that's the power rings? Would be a zoom out, where to see where, that's Amherst Street?
Almost under 10 dogs so far.
And what I was saying?
Do you want to include the foster base as a way now? And the Massachusetts dogs that go into my home, so the ones that are the rescue.
All finished up, that's it?
I did check that. Foster dogs will be moved in, right at Bachelor Street.
I think I tend to roll.
Yes.
So the second piece of this is to, we're looking to build a facility toward Bachelor Street. That's why I mentioned you joining me, Melissa, joining the appeals. So all happening at the same time. For a public, for a public area. And it, most things along for them to purchase and sell. So you want to just explain what you're doing here?
Yeah, so this is, you know, this is the idea here. You know, we have 20 panels on the backside of the building. And then we'll have the lobby, the gay bathroom. We'll have a meet and greet room for people who come and adopt and just spend some time with their pet. Offices, we'll have some living rooms which are kind of like pet mommas, early mommas or puppies and we'll have special space for them. Staff rooms, then we'll have our quarantine area, which is also regulated by the state. That's open to isolation, that's if somebody does come up with some sort of disease, then that's a separate area. It's completely isolated from the rest of the county. And then this will be our isolation room down here. We'll have a rooming room. And all of these areas here are not going to be open to the public or anything like that for rooming and everything like that. Like what's going to be open to the public is coming in volunteering, getting supplies and resources and everything like that. As well as coming in and adopting animals from us.
And the site plan, the shelter, parking?
Yes. I think right now we'll use the 24 parking slots along the zoning regulations for how big the building would be.
Yeah, I used the, there's, this is not, doesn't fit a lot of your parking categories because it's not specific use. So I went with the general use, one that's 200 square, one parking for 200 square feet. So that's why I came up with the 24. And now in very preliminary, we've been just exploring how this would fit, how it would fit on the site so we can kind of lean it out and see how that works.
So will there be a residential on the site at all?
There will be. Will be occupied early morning through evening and then closed off for overnight.
So there's no one on staff that night?
Not overnight, no. So, you know, these were just working with the designer, this is what we want in the building. Certain things can be changed around as needed or as planned.
We have no oversight on the site plan and zone. Ken, do you have anything up on that for us as far as placing it in the agricultural residential?
Well, so that's in the, I just, based on what I believe from the conversation I made, it seems to be in the single-family zone. If you look at the use that possibly could be equivalent to which of a veterinary establishment place for animal to raise and pet to gain the purpose. It does allow, that type of uses allowed in residential single-family zone as part of the plan. Now, there was a question.
Not just wants to build it for a...
There's two plans right there in the property.
Oh, based on?
Yeah, but it was conceptual kind of ways we could go with the design.
So I think as far as the concern that the, the, it seems that the zoning bylaws isn't allowed use of this.
We've allowed two others at least, there's veterinarian and the... Shut slash. Okay, so for the purpose of this meet and greet, trying to figure out what's going on. So, please protect anybody in the world that might get this out of sync. What you're going to want to do is get your plan ready, submit an application for the allowed use.
So it's separate from it?
Special from the allowed use. You're also going to want to submit an application for variance for the size of the building. That piece of it will go along with zoning board to join, present to all of us. They'll approve, or disapprove of the building. And then assuming it's approved by them, we look at site plan for a board and review screws up. Everything can be done on that.
I'm just curious about the variance aspect, is it?
I don't believe it's a variance. It's 1,200 square feet going to whatever sort of square footage, but that sounds like a period. Special fund.
Yeah, I don't think that would be to the zoning board deals at all. Just as long as they comply with the dimensional regulations in the zoning bylaw.
Well, that's just, our 1,200 square feet is our maximum without a special permit.
You've been on that either?
Yep. Was it a special permit?
Got it, alright.
We talked about increasing it.
Is that specific to, because I think I don't, here the lead area file, which is the accessory use, right? This is a principal use. So I think the way that the bylaw should be in application here is based on table two of the dimensional regulations. It suggests structures other than dwellings. So this is, you know, this is a structure other than a dwelling. So in the residential single-family zone, you have the minimum lot size 3,000, minimum frontage 150 feet, front yard side and rear setbacks. And then you have to leave a special permit, set numberable. And then a minimum height, maximum height and maximum lot coverage. So my understanding would be that if they are able to comply with that, that they should be fine for like the special permit process. I don't know if there's additional regulations with regards to commercial type of use.
Do you have the chart from anyone?
Yeah. Yeah, this dimensional regulation chart on page 18. This is, and this is specific to non, non, or structures other than dwellings. The, I think the discussion that you were bringing up is specific to if it's being used as an accessory use.
Is it currently mixed use?
No, it's a single-family zone.
Okay, so...
But that's an allowed use within the single-family.
Got it, okay. So they don't need a special permit for that?
Yeah, so they just need a special permit for that use in the zone and it would just go through special permits slash site numberable.
But not zoning board use?
No.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll confirm that, and it's different than what we've told you tonight. We'll get back to you, you know.
Perfect.
Trying to streamline this point so that if you do have to, it will not be done the same way.
I agree with you on that.
Let us double check. And this will be the same thing, correct me if I'm wrong, where plans are sent out to the other boards for their review and comment.
Yeah, you may need to go to the conservation commission, I think, based on the conversation. So that's just, that's outside this process.
And the thing, many things we're going to be looking for is parking, stormwater management. So if it's paving, you don't have to pave, actually we don't encourage it. What you're going to do with stormwater runoff in the building is, you want to make sure it doesn't affect the waters. Lighting, signage, egress entrance, you know, that's like, other than that, I can't think of anything. And the other boards will have to do a dress of, you know, the border health building.
That'll be part of the building.
That'll be part of the septic plan though, too, right?
And the building.
Right, right.
Well, we send these out to those...
To committees.
Those boards for their review before the public hearing. So one way it could work, could work is that coming before us, we've already distributed the plans to the other departments. One department head may have an issue with something that they'd like to address somehow. We may or may not be able to address it, maybe something conservation. We can, we could approve the plan conditionally that the board helps consider to address something like that. Such as what we just did with the veterans memorial park. We approve it conditional that highly superintendent is satisfied with the stormwater management.
Do you have a lighting plan in store or a stormwater management plan?
We're still working on those. Right now we were more, we've been very conceptual, so we, you know, we did two concepts that could fit the use, you know, the building. We allocated a space for stormwater, we know that they're, they've already heard for septic. So we've shown where septic would be, same with wetlands and kind of getting ourselves on where we were at with the concepts. And I think the next step would be creating those plans.
Any other questions?
The stormwater management part of it, is there a contact person that we should be talking to in regards to what their requirements are?
To my knowledge, there's no requirements from our perspective other than no discharge to the street. No discharge to the dogs. Doesn't maintain it on-site. Shows how you're doing over this, you got some swales, that tension area. Just do the calculations, show it, this would be sufficient to manage. What's the score, James?
So right now the building itself, it's a 125 by 40 on the area that's building. And then there's a next to 20 feet that comes out because those are the channels which are outside. So in total, what did I?
4,800.
4,800 and then the parking area, you know, we started in the calculations today. So those are the two big area surfaces.
Again, parking, if it's, if it's not paved, it's just a ground parking, you don't have to experience yourself.
Perfect, perfect. In regards to the parking, if we felt like 24 spaces were, was more than we really needed, would there be a way to do a...
That's for where?
Yeah, for a reduction. You know, I... Yes, yeah, yeah. No, and again, it's the discussion on, I pulled the numbers straight from your zoning bylaws to see what we could, you know, we could do on the more conservative side of things. But I don't know if I'm thinking that many parking spaces. Yep, that's pretty good. So I wanted to make sure that we could, we could address it.
Probably make sure you've got enough circulation space to bring in big trucks in for deliveries or...
Duster.
I just wanted to see if that makes sense. We're very aware of that. Anything else?
And probably just want turning radius for fire burn. Any other questions for me?
Look forward to seeing you again.
Yeah, me too.
We're very positive about it. It seems like a great location, meaning because of the water situation here is much less than anywhere else that we've looked at other properties and stuff.
And we've done this before, and typical concerns from owners who are here, they get notified and it's just noise.
I mean, one where...
And one of the things that, so you know, our approach is that we're, all these concepts are in regards to that, to evade noise. Basically, one is facing towards the power lines on the back end of this. And the other one is trying to push the building as far as I can within the site and then all the panels will be looking to the back. We're definitely trying to push it.
You've got a lot of extreme contours.
Yeah, it definitely drops there. So that's one of the challenges of this, like also ledge, which is an area that, as we all know. That's why we're looking at two different types of ways to manage it because we have some constraints that we need to deal with.
Great, so we're managing well the application process. Square footage, building is different than what I told you.
And do you know a top some timeline from applications room to funding normal?
Yeah, so we submit the application, we circulate the plans, we give them two or three weeks. At the same time, you have to advertise to the board, notify the owners. You'll be required to go down to the accessory office, get the owners, apply for the owners. Then you'll copy, send the copies to our administrator, administrator, they'll know all the copies. So everything happens in conjunction, so that we have it here. Anybody, any others that have concerns, they can come to the meeting and voice their concerns or their...
In the schedule of the meetings, you need every two weeks, question?
Second and fourth, one day every month. Typically. Sometimes it changes, sometimes it's... Some may come to us and say, you need this done before, try to accomplish.
Yeah, I just want to, I don't want to push the settle too, too much, you know, it's very accommodating, but it's a weight form. The quicker we can get through it, yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're coming, there's a change in what you thought, otherwise I'm gonna get that application submitted as soon as I like.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone. While we're going down the agenda, South Street property, we've got the plans. They've submitted the plans, I know they're after, they've submitted plans for the solar, so we can figure out what they are.
Have to dust that conversation off. I know that this was like two years ago, then you made it, right?
So they're, so they're trying to close the project out. This is the solar park, the one, solar field around South Street. So they built it, I guess they're pretty close to complete and they want sign off to operate. And one of the things holding them up is on the condition is paying the fee. We hadn't been able to calculate the fee because we didn't have the askers. They made some changes, some minor changes. Basing it on some old bylaw calculation, we calculate based on the square foot. So a square foot of every little column that's holding that, plus a couple of smaller columns. So square footage of every little column that's holding that up, plus a couple of small holdings. So then we can, anyways, they can pay it. And then I think that's the last thing holding up the town code enforcement officer issuing that permanent. You should take that lot of it. So, do you feel comfortable doing that for the board?
Yeah, I have to figure out. I know that there was a response between little Kathy and the board with regards to this particular project. They reached a new plan to follow. I mean, I think that if we can even, it's good to have obviously the hard copy, but I can probably turn that into an electronic copy. So if they have either already submitted that or we can ask them to.
Well, according to the email, they have, huh, they have some money themselves.
You mean the hard copy?
Both. And this project originally started as fixed panels. And then they came back, it was perfect. And then they came back to the board again for, the PM is a father of this. And they also, they also changed arrangement panels. They made it smaller, something. You know what Kathy, let me just hope the board objects. Why don't you send out a correspondence asking them to provide us with a total square footage of footings? For all, for all handles, structures, buildings, paths and paths. It's all square footage for footings of all hands, structures and buildings and paths.
And then do we have a breakdown of the other solar arrangements or fields, like, so we can go by that?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so do we have another breakdown, like, what the other solar?
No, because they're different. Some of them, these were, some are on screws, some are on. Right, if the one in Lobo, that the old dome, because it's on the dome, they have big pads that support it. These, I think we're talking just basically four inch diameter, either screws or like ball columns.
Yeah.
Something like that. What are they doing on that? They did, no, no, they just drove ID's or whatever. So let's ask them to, let them provide it to us. And then we will then double check a few of the clients and see what they've done. We spend hours and hours of it, which you had it where we had for the most recent. But that does include drywall access roads with the structures. But would it include poles coming exit?
So it sounds as if, I just found an email, this was sent in March of this year, where the bill is six half, six twenty-five and change, plus ten SAS per square footage. So we just have to do the general.
And it leave the town as that monthly mess.
Was there a connection charge from like the utility or national grid?
National grid revamped all those lines to accommodate this project. So it never something, I do remember something about a connection charge. And that was all between the solar company and national grid. Our charges are direct, related to site.
Oh, okay.
Try to stay, I know what you're saying, but because we're going to consult on the period here. We want to have char cover, have the cost to cover. So do you have, are you, everybody in favor of doing that?
Yes.
Sure. All right, so. All right, so Melissa, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. It's not too often we get volunteers to come into the office and
Well, I have one should be planning for. And I was out, we should be planning for for a long time. But city politics or city planning is so much different than town planning. So it's going to take me a while to become adjusted. So would you be very worried if I asked?
Ask the next questions.
Okay.
I'm sure you're going to bring some stuff up there.
We'll do that. It's completely different. It's a completely different animal. And then, so if you don't have me asking, why do we need two cameras? Is it because like we have preliminary site plans that come to us? And then the second meeting is more to approve that and how does that?
Do we need every two weeks, basically, because there's enough that's put on our agenda?
Right.
To, to me, whether it's, it's not because it's an ongoing project. Ongoing projects, depending on the urgency, we try to accommodate. Sometimes we meet more often than not. There was a time where the board used to shut down for a month.
Oh, right.
For the summer. And we were too busy this time. And we changed that because we didn't think it was fair to the applicants. So we were on the case, we had another one, we need to start the process. We're trying to be business friendly with the company. It's a tax base, so try to help them move things along. Basically, if you run a business or been involved in operating a business, time is always on this.
So is there a deadline for applications to go to board?
Well, we still must say, there's no, there's no, see no timing or any type of timing for that. They go down to apply for the application. Fill the application up and pay for it. It's brought, it's brought us, we checked for accuracy, data. Depending on what type of application, it's a special permit, site plan, approvals, so forth. There's a process. We just sped up the process through the last kind of meeting, an article for not putting projects through the hearing process that are already allowed by, right? So who are we to be putting through that process when the towns are devoted saying, this type of business is allowed in this zone? Why should we put through half of that process on this assembly?
Yeah, that was very
So we go straight to site. There, there have been occasions where we've held a meeting on the sink for a specific purpose, such as when we're going to marijuana bylaws. You know, all we're talking about is marijuana. And as well, we need to, as Jim said, be here for our constituents. But we also don't want to be here once a month and here until 11 o'clock at night.
I get that, but we had it should be. It was sometimes we were there for hours.
Yeah. Rather than take care of it right on the floor.
Makes sense.
Okay, so we held off on reorganizing, hoping that you would, you would shut up when you did.
Yes, the last time, I'm sorry, it was like just last minute. I, yeah, sorry about that.
No worries. So we've got four, four positions. We've got Pioneer Valley rep, which I don't want to talk about that. Pioneer Valley rep, secretary, treasury, chair, and vice chair. Before, before we get into that, I like to know how the board feels about having Ken take over as, as our main consultant, so.
Yeah, I did the minutes in Chigbee and it's a lot, so.
And it's, it's hard to pay attention to the meeting for us.
Right.
I, I, I will say that, you know, my meetings, my minutes probably not going to be as thorough as Lily's.
I don't think any of yours.
And, and the reasoning too is I don't want to spend a lot of my time sort of writing minutes.
And, and today's technology, we're unchanging. So as long as we hit the highlights and the vote, I don't know if we have to. And then you can bring the minutes for proof. Or someone said, oh, we should probably add this, then we can, we can add that in after. And it's too hard for us to be
Right.
Full-time job, come here and take minutes.
Right. How I did as a clerk is I just, I did like I hand, I hand, I wrote all the notes. And then I gave it to our planning director and he typed them. So I don't mind doing something like that, but I can't.
Well, we're kind of on the same side. And if there's a night that Ken's not available, we can say, hey, we lost a day.
Right, describe them and then.
We'll get through it. But I'm just saying, that position is going to be as low as it was with the previous asset. That's why I want to know that first. And let's not forget that if a member, if somebody is doing the minutes outside of the wardener, we are going to have to initiate the minutes.
Unless he do it, unless he does it because we gave him some, right?
No, we had eight people before that would spread the minutes. Why would we have to do that for the board? Apparently that was some law that Will dug up or found out about. That Will was working as recording secretary for us. No, it isn't. I just want to remind the board. And then the, the other position of Pioneer Valley rep. I did it for a year, years ago. Basically, I was the point person for funding information to, to relay it to the board. Since then, they do have events and meetings and, you know, Will, Will or the other previous you could go.
It's like one theater, right?
Yeah.
How would they view our?
Well, I don't, I don't know if going to all of those is necessary. So we have, Ken's a Pioneer Valley rep, so he can also inform us on other things. But it would be good to have a point person that gets all the literature, all the information, and they just bring it to the board and share it. We've got a deadline to look at this, but there's a grant. Usually, Ken's telling us that way ahead. So, that said, unless anybody else has any other comments, I would like to open the floor for nominations. We can start wherever we can. I'll nominate, Trump deals, Chair.
I'll second you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Vice chair. I'll nominate Mr. Sheen. Vice chair.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Secretary, does anybody?
So I don't mind doing it as long as, like I said, as long as you, I, I can take shorthand and then
I think that's great. I, you know, obviously have the record of the
Yeah.
The actual meeting.
A real additional note.
Okay.
But Ken will take all the minutes.
Okay.
Ninety-five, ninety-nine, he's here all day.
Okay, awesome.
So.
Okay.
If you want to.
All right, great.
So nominate Melissa's name, Jermaine.
Yeah.
As secretary. We have second.
I'll second.
Ready for your discussion? All those in favor? I propose to have treasury. Treasury. I'll nominate Jason Swinfield as treasurer. We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pioneer Valley rep, by default.
Yeah.
We'll make it fun.
I'll nominate Lee Bay as PDBC rep.
We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I've got a meeting at, on the plate.
Awesome.
Does anybody have anything else? Right now, discuss?
Yes, I brought to the chair attention the request to be put on the future agenda, preferably the second meeting in June. And that's specific to the final products for the FDP action grant that the town received. And that funds that the town received to support a regulatory review. That's specific to what came out of the town's community resilience building workshop. That was a couple of years ago. So there's, was some regulatory review based on that. In addition, the, a, an additional chapter to your master plan that summarizes summary findings. So that is a resilience chapter in your master plan that's specific to that particular branch. And it's, it's a presentation for the board that myself and everyone I call in the review. Basically just selling out those various products. And then the board can take what it wants, you know, and add upon adopting the additional resilience chapter, which you, I actually just received it. So I will be sharing all of the documents this evening, part of the report, primarily, for you to review and comment slash provide comment on for the meeting, the next future meeting. And then with regards to the regulations, figuring out whether or not those regulations are based on the community planning process that occurred. And obviously, you know, similar to all other bylaws and it's a workshop.
So if the board doesn't object, why don't you contact Kathy and get it on our agenda?
I have, I have one more question. Ken, approximately how long do you think this?
I couldn't ma, I mean, you will have the, so I think it will be a very directed, high level discussion. I, I think the board doesn't, obviously doesn't have to act on anything. But I imagine, you know, less than a 30 minute presentation.
Okay, I didn't know if you're talking
No, it's, yeah. Yeah, no, no, no. It's a presentation of the products. And since the board will have at least two weeks to review it, you know, it's, it's very high level. And it's more so also, you know, not even the action to be
And I think with the presentation, I mean, we have, we have explain it, pros and cons. And then the board knows that we may not have got it fully. Have a chance to fully, fully, everything. Just sort of put it there for us, actually. And again, we're going to, I guess we're going to go.
Yeah, and you know, that'll be part of the work plan, the forward. If, if there happens to be a bylaw matter that the board wants in the forward. You know, we'll go through the same process, maybe bring others in.
All right, good. One, two, you've got new numbers. The house came with them. One, one, two, you've got new members, uh, the house came with them. Different, different, um, meetings, quite different things. In other words, sometimes we get rid of just three people, other times, uh, you know, it's a four or so, which we're about to have at that time. So, we don't even pay attention, if we can't make those certain meetings, I can let, let, uh, myself and Kathy Leonard, in case we have to reschedule or, um, typically if we need off board, you know, we still hold the meeting and then kick it down, so that they don't have to go back out and re-advertise.
All right, cool.
We'll continue, yeah.
Do you have a list of everyone's current emails and phone numbers?
You sent me something the other day, I don't...
Yeah, I want to, I want to add a new email and I want to...
We'll circulate, circulate.
Okay. So, I have Lily's, I know.
Well, everything that comes from Kathy, she'd have all her emails.
Oh, yeah, nice, true, yeah.
Yeah, so, so...
The phone number faces last minute, to say, uh, someone might be media or...
So, the other thing is, uh, so everybody's aware of it, um, so, so we're not in violation of the open email law. Make sure if any emails that fill up, copies everybody in and it's, and it goes to Kathy Leonard as well, Tom Hurd and the pen. The administrator assistant, Tom administrator assistant. Um, it goes to her and the, yours. Typically, any of the emails don't have any, any discussion of, of, uh, topic at hand other than, I can't make tonight's, next week's meeting or something along those lines, anything that's substance, uh, generally.
Or you're gonna, you can't talk about anything. Now, is there, so, forgive me, so you're in place of, we don't have a planning director.
Right.
Okay, awesome. So, you will give suggestions on...
So, I do write staff awards based on the application or like report to the board made, you know, with, with some recommendations or considerations, uh, to me. Um, so that belongs as part of the public record as well as comments from other towns. So, it's like a planning comment.
Yeah. So, in Chigby, and I, this is the last time I'll reference Chigby, but, um, so what we did was when we got our meeting sheet, like, what the meeting was going to be pertaining, it also gave planning staff recommendations. So, this way, what happened this evening, when we were like, oh, we need special permit, oh, you know, that was, it doesn't happen because we already had in front of us, okay, special, we need special permit needed for side of build, uh, building, uh, there could be some setbacks due to conservation, uh, things like that already prepped for us. So, this way, we knew right away, we were speaking to, you know, someone presented something to us, we already knew. Is that...
So, that is similar to what I believe providing for the board when an official application comes in. So, because this was informal, I didn't necessarily have, you know, I was, like, on the fly looking.
No, absolutely, right.
Uh, but, um, I will say that, um, you know, those are certain things that I haven't worked with the board for now, almost for three years. Um, I'm sure there are some administrative processes that can be improved. Um, also, you know, if, once, once a town hires and is able to hire a town planner and comes to the board with that stuff, um, you know, I think the board, and hoping that this can be part of a discussion of, of what I can help the board with in addition to, you know, the, the regular responsibilities of the board, is to just create some additional efficiencies, however that can assist. Um, in addition to some of the high level support that I provide with bylaws.
Yeah, I certainly, especially with streamlining.
Yeah.
But typically, a hearing, um, there's very few things that, very few hearings that get voted on that night.
Okay.
Usually kicking back to the bond board.
Right. It's just so helpful, even for me not knowing, you know, for any zoning laws, um, like, what your suggestions, like, how, you know, how the board should vote.
I would have picked out one of the biggest where you want.
Yeah, but no, I mean...
So, yeah, are you sure that with the board prior to the meeting, um, in advance of the meeting?
Awesome.
That you would be acting or possibly acting on the permit? Uh, so, once, once an, uh, an application comes in, uh, and members are like, hey, are you going to review that? So, that's a good reminder for me. Um, but, um, prior to that meeting, I would be providing the board with a memo that basically talks through some of the zoning, um, issues, if there are any, or just considerations based on zoning.
Well, I know this is very informal, so that's why, you know, but that, that's awesome to know, okay. So, how do we know if it's informal or, or not?
The jury comes out. Uh, I get a lot of phone calls, either from the code enforcement officer or, uh, referrals to me to, uh, as chair. And I, I refrain, you know, refrain from giving many, uh, exact answers.
Yeah.
Give us some generalizations and then I say, why don't you come in front of the board so the board can hear both and we can give you some sort of direction as to that for, uh, you know, I don't want to speak for the board.
Yeah.
I think it's the fairest thing, but I don't want to send them down, I mean, I mean, I'll think that, I'll bring some of the ball around and that.
Yeah. So, when an application comes in, do we get to review the application before the hearing? Okay.
That's typically sent electronically.
Great.
And, uh...
We did print out.
However, we can, we can see the, the paperwork before we can.
Awesome.
And if it's a hearing, a special permit hearing, it's a no discuss, no discussion can happen prior to developing the hearing?
Yeah.
And no discussion can happen?
Right.
Uh, once hearings continue, you know, so we can't, can't, uh, inform the discussion because the applicants, the lawyers, nobody lets me hear our thoughts.
Challenge.
So, we, we keep it all, I mean, ourselves, still.
Awesome.
Keeps us all up.
Well, yeah, that's, you know, hopefully, the, uh, pretty, uh, serious.
So, any questions?
If I may, um, so, June thirtieth is the end of the fiscal year, so I'll be drawing up another similar contract, um, and provide a similar work plan that I did at the last, uh, last year. So, um, your next meeting will also include the final bill. Um, so, it will be both the bill and contract, uh, starting in July.
So, our, our budget currently doesn't cover it at this point?
I'm making it, the, the, the budget for the rest of the fiscal year, yes, that, that covers.
But because the town appropriated money to hire a consult, or a, a, a full-time plant, we're supposed to need to use those monies to pay, to pay for, for your services as a consultant. And any monies we earn, or I should say, I'm going to bring in from fees, will go out of offset that, that, uh, that, so.
Um, yes, yeah, that, that was, you know, the arrangement, hire two, I think, times a year.
Is that something that, um, when you go to town meeting, you put on your contract time limit or is it a week?
Uh, it's usually done through a, a current process.
Yeah.
It's still those two aspects, but because they're Pioneer Value Plan, it's a, uh, agency that hired, uh, through the, uh, process, to my understanding. Take our, take our motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any interim?